That's your video, okay.
All right, we are live.
Okay. Okay, we're ready to go. You want to bring up the agenda and we'll start. With 6:30.
It's time.
I shall call the meeting to order. I shall do a role, I'll do the role call. Mr. Schuler?
Here.
Mr. Stitt?
Here.
Obviously, Mr. Shadwell is here. Ms. Khan?
Here.
Ms. Freed?
Here.
And Mr. Campbell? I thought I saw Mr. Campbell's name up there earlier. Okay.
Shows that Eddie and Ryan both have their mics muted.
Okay. Okay, fair enough.
I'm here.
Right, okay, thanks, Ryan. Okay, well, we'll show you all join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Thank you. Now, next item that was on the agenda was approval of the minutes. The original agenda that Mr. McCarthy sent out said that they'd be included in the next meeting packet. I spoke to him and thought it was more appropriate for us to approve the minutes of the last meeting tonight. Because of the way that meeting went as a public hearing, I thought it was more appropriate if we agreed to that tonight. So, did everybody get a copy of that today, Mr. McCarthy?
Yep, I sent it out and I can also share it on the screen as well.
Okay, if you wouldn't mind. Just asked, did everybody get a chance to read it?
Yes.
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 Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, please.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Or should we run through just to make sure?
I would, I would stand to be safe.
Okay, Mr. Stitt?
Yes, approved.
Ms. McCann?
Yes.
Mr. Schuler?
Yes.
Ms. Freed?
Yes.
Mr. Shadwell, yes. Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, shall we move on to the next item in our agenda? And that was the continuation of the discussion over the Glen Mary modification. Now, we had sent out a series of modifications and I'd asked Mr. McCarthy if he would tell us what has been the results of those requests.
Absolutely. So, on February 2nd, a motion was made to table this, the deliberation and the decision to give the developer more time to provide more information regarding the removal consolidation of four lots onsite, as well as, you know, just generally, general clarification questions that are included in the minutes as well. The applicant responded with this email. They determined that there are no revisions to the plan or additional information to provide. And they requested that the original application remain for review and consideration. And just for reference, I included the draft PUD agreement with the edits that are, that I believe were reflected in the meeting, as well as just general consensus or, you know, deliberation with the applicant as well. So, as part of your deliberation, I'd recommend going through this draft PUD agreement. Mostly the items to be discussed are going to be the yellow items, the green, I think there's general consensus on. And then the purple violet sort of color is, just needs a little bit more deliberation on your guys' end. Just for clarification purposes, to see if we need to strike them, clarify them, or adopt altogether. And I also included the land use and support recommendations that were just carried over from the prior, as well as staff's recommendations and motion template, if you so desire. But other than that, however you guys want to proceed, that's all I have. And of course, the applicant is here to discuss in greater detail. And I can unmute them as well so that they are.
Okay. Primarily, what they said is they didn't want to make any changes. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct.
They just want to leave it as it is and not consider any of the things that we suggested. Okay?
Oh, Mr. Palo is raising his hand.
Okay.
Mr. McCarthy and Mr. Chairman, I do think it's important, I don't want to give the impression that the applicant is being dismissive. That's not the case at all. The key issue, Mr. Chairman, as Mr. McCarthy indicated, is the lack of the ability, not the desire, but the lack of ability to remove the four lots. And frankly, primarily due to financial considerations. The development cost remain the same regardless of its 50 or 54 lots. And please don't look loose side of the fact that right now, there is approval for 96 units. The approved plan right now for the land amenities allows 96 units. So, the reduction to 54 units is quite considerable. It's about 44, 45% reduction. And I think that the single family is good, not only for the community, but of course, for the development. You know, single family spread out a little bit as opposed to attached dwelling units. You know, again, right now, they can build 96. They certainly want to preserve that right to build 96. And if the board is inclined to approve the application, I want to make sure, and again, with Mr. McCarthy's insight and the developer's corrections, as to which items are agreed to and which are not. The, again, the primary is, the primary disagreement is the reduction from 54 to 50 units. And Mr. McCarthy, thank you for keeping the development agreement on the screen. And I can actually, Mr. Chairman, for the other members of the commission, I can tell you which are issues and which are not. And it's not a disagreement, but again, issues as to why some of these conditions cannot be complied with. And I can go through those. For example, Mr. McCarthy, your paragraph number one, condition number one is reconfiguration or redistribution of the open space is fine. Number two, again, we don't agree with is the reduction of four lots. Number two, of course, is fine. Paragraph number three, the side yard setbacks. Paragraph numbered one with the building the homes to a higher standard is fine. I think that's a good comment, we think it's a good comment. Paragraph number two, the option for a one-car garage, that doesn't work because the lots are too small. So, the developer, either one of the messers, Faruja or Mr. Smith can give insight as to why that can't be done. And number four, the open space. The board as to the interconnectivity of phases one and two, two, two and three, or two and four, I think the board did not like that idea. We don't think it's a good idea to open up the development to, you know, those living outside of the development of the subdivision. So, we don't like the idea of that portion of paragraph four, number one. Connecting the trail to Nagley, fine, good idea. Number two, approve the reduction, approve reduction with the commitment to install various landscaping is fine. And the other items are fine, general conditions, but just want to go over which, either a correction or comment. Mr. McCarthy, paragraph number six, under the general conditions where it says, "Open space to be owned jointly and common by the owners." We would propose that the open space and the hiker biker trail, which I understand won't be, won't be constructed. So, the open space would be owned by the association opposed to on a lot. And would maintain that. The other item is number 13, fencing. We talked about that at the last hearing, if you recall, members of the commission. And we didn't think that would be a good idea, but certainly open to further discussion with Mr. McCarthy. The fence along a 50-foot landscaping easement that may be used at some time in the future. It's questionable whether or not that would occur, we don't think is feasible. So, other than that, the big issue being the reduction in the lots is everything else has been agreed to. It was a great discussion, I understand Ed and/or Joe Faruja had with Eddie, was very, very productive. We sincerely appreciate the consideration the commission has given throughout this process, especially the, you know, the over-three-hour meeting a month ago. And again, I want to, and just ask for your consideration to approve it as proposed, subject to the conditions that Mr. McCarthy approved, excepting out item number one, paragraph two, item number three, paragraph two, and part of paragraph four, connecting phases one and two to paragraph four. And a couple of the minor conditions on the, on the general conditions or minor comments. And then finally, you know, in your motion, we asked you, do you either approve or deny? You approve based on the plan and the conditions we set forth. And I can, you know, give a little bit more time to, so Mr. McCarthy can write those down or deny it. So, there's no question that we can preserve our right to build the multifamily units as currently approved. And again, you know, please be aware, and lawyers don't have a habit of being brief. So, I'll just simply wrap up as, this is not in any shape or form intended to be heavy-handed whatsoever. It's just asking for your sincere cooperation and consideration to allowing the development to go forward as a single-family 54-unit development as opposed to a 96-unit development that I don't think anyone would really desire to have. And Mr. McCarthy, that's all the comments that I have.
Thanks, Mr. Palo, yeah. And just for clarification, on item four, number one, the as well as phase one, two, that sort of thing, that was a typo, that should have been, that should have been scratched. I thought, you know, I made the edit earlier on, so no problem from staff on that one.
That's fine.
I had a question. Part of the removal of the space was to remove the surface trail between lots 40, 41, and 78, 79. Do you plan to still leave that trail be there?
No.
That's, we were, we agreed to remove that trail between 78 and 79 and.
40, 41, okay. 40, 41.
Yeah, 40 and 41, yeah.
Yeah, and that's the one that I have on, under the waivers. I struck it in red because it was on the original, but I just wanted to show the edit that I, it was, it seemed to have been agreed upon between the commission and the applicant.
Right.
The Nagley situation, where we left off was that there was going to be a bollard placed at the ends to prevent vehicular traffic going through between the two developments. I spoke with Chief Wright this afternoon about this issue. And he said that there's no problem putting a bollard there as long as it's NOx compliant. And so, that's reflected in the, in this PUD agreement here as well, that it's a NOx compliant bollard.
I mean, a NOx compliant.
Yeah, NOx compliant is, like, normally they have like a NOx box where emergency services is able to use a master key to get in and they can remove it, but the general public would not have the ability to remove or open the gate. What, you know, normally it's a gate and there's a dedicated box where, you know, police, sheriff, fire department can all get through to it.
Thanks, Eddie.
Sure.
Okay. Okay, well, I still have the original question I had as to, you know, making some of those lots a little bigger because, you know, none of them are within the standard size for our lots. So, I'll pass it over and I'll ask the rest of the commission if they have any comments. Move along, so where should we start? Shall we start with Mr. Stitt?
Well, I'm still concerned about it and unfortunately, I got a new computer. So, I do not have the download of their plans that we all had last month. So, I was trying to search through here and see if I could find out. I don't even have that, for some reason, I don't even have the email without attachment, Eddie.
I'll, I can get, I'll get it set up here. I've got, I just have to minimize some things on my desktop here and I can get those plans.
You can email it, that's fine, because I've got, I'm working with two screens here. So, I can blow it up like I did last week on another screen, see it better. But I'm still, thank you, I see it there. I still wish that, no disrespect, and I don't know how you found it, the 45%, but you know, by removing four lots, you say it reduces by 45%. I'm not sure what that 45% reduction means.
It was from the 96 lots that's currently approved, 96 units.
So, four lots represents 45% of 96?
No, the 96 to the 54, sir.
You're going all the way back to the original 96, not the 54 we're talking about now.
No, I'm going back to what's approved right now.
By Amelia, okay.
Right, by non.
It was actually, it was actually approved by zoning commission, by your zoning commission.
The, just for reference, that was the final development plan that was theoretically, in all practicality, it's a by right approval whereby the, you know, through the moratorium, the zoning commission compared it to the preliminary development plan, which had been approved by Amelia and said, "Look, you know, if this meets the spirit and intent of the preliminary development plan, it's, in all likelihood, you know, we're probably legally obligated more or less to approve it." I mean, that was, that was a general spirit of it, just to kind of give a relief valve for Amelia.
I guess if you're saying legally, we're kind of bound to approve it, this whole meeting's kind of a mute point.
No, no, his point there, Jeff, is that the original 96 that they keep waving about that they want to move back to, if we don't do what we're asked, they'll move back to the 96 land amenities. That was what was originally agreed to by the non-existent village of Amelia. And when we adopted our moratorium.
But Stan, wait a minute, I understand all of that, but I also remember last week, the gentleman, one of the gentlemen sitting at that table in the conference room there also spoke up that they did away with that because today's market does not like those. And I kind of read between some lines that they were fearful they wouldn't be able to sell them and that's why they changed over to this.
Right. That was sort of where I was too.
And I just want to make it absolutely clear, we are not withdrawing the plan, the PUD plan for 96 units.
Doug Smith with McGill Smith Punching, I'd just like to make a clarification. There are 56 lots proposed, the plan that's in front of you is 56 lots, not 54. It's the same as it originally was.
That was the 56, but we want to, we want to reduce it by four in order to make the changes that we talked about. And that would bring it down to 52. All lots out of 56 is not very many.
Well, I can say we did look at the lot width and tried to reduce those four lots. And we looked at reducing two on Virginia and two on Snapdragon. And quite frankly, to do that, you're really only distributing, you distribute 52 over the number of lots, you're only really increasing the lot width by approximately three feet. And, you know, you go from a 52-foot wide lot to a 55-foot wide lot, really doesn't accomplish much. You're still going to get the same product, you're still going to get the same type house, the same, you know, same features, the same materials and what have you. And it just, and between that and the economics, it's just, again, was not feasible to do. So, really, to say quite frankly, the bag wasn't worth a buck, you know, it just didn't help the plan much.
You know, at least, at least the eaves won't be touching if you reduce the number of lots.
Can I ask, what are, what do you, what's the goal of reducing the number of lots?
Well, if you remember correctly, we wanted to spread the lots at the back down, you know, which marked on that plan as 110, 109, in order to make a feasible burn between the existing houses at the end of Nagle and that whole planned subdivision. And in order to do that, we thought that we could, it would be easy to move the boundaries of lots. Nine, you know, eight, nine, 10, and 11. And then to do that, if you remove the two lots in the middle, you would push everything along, back towards your roundabout. And by removing the four lots, the two off either side, the one off either side, that would allow you to get that little bit of extra room. And in this day and age of computers, I assume that the plan is on a computer and it should be not that difficult to push them along. That was your original plan.
Yeah, Stan, it was actually 84, 85, 108, and 109.
Was it? Oh, sorry, okay.
And just to provide a comment to that, I think it was our understanding there were some concerns about ability to police people from clearing trees within that area.
Right, along the back, right.
Yeah, if it became an open space, a lot as well, you still have the same condition. You still have a policing issue where people could go in and take right, do what they want in that open space. So, you know, we just felt that, you know, again, to do that, it was just detrimental to the plan and to the economics of the project.
Okay, we move on. And Mr. Schuler, did you have some questions?
Well, it seems to me that there's about three choices. One is that they go ahead with their 56, the other is they go ahead with their 96, or the other is they just say the heck with it. And I don't know which of those is most likely if we recommend against. I'm an, the word economics was just mentioned and that's my field. I'm more of an economics guy than an aesthetics guy. And to me, having 56 is much better than having 96. If it makes economic sense to the developer, it seems to me it makes sense to the township to have fewer lots than 96 or fewer residences than 96 and only have 56 in there. So, my tendency is to let them go with it, let the chips fall where they may in the back there with the people. It's not really their property. The people that we seem to be very concerned about, whether you have a 15-foot strip or a 20-foot strip of trees or this or that. But that's just my view. These guys put a lot of time and effort into this and it seems reasonable to me. But, and I don't understand why we're getting so deep in the weeds over four lots out of a 56 lot proposal. That's just my view.
Right.
That's all I got, Stan.
Okay, well, my opinion was if you could come from 96 down to 56, why the hell couldn't you come down to 52? That smaller reduction was negligible. I mean, that's a 4% reduction from where you are. I didn't think that was that bad. Shall we move on? Suzanne? Ms. Freed?
Yeah. You know, we gave back and didn't make you put a trail between 78 and 79. So, we actually made two lots more financially attractive to people because honestly, I don't know who would have bought those lots with the trail running through them. So, I'm sitting here looking, can we not at least give some open space on maybe 84 and 108? So, we don't have multiple houses right up against Nagley. Those lots look bigger, so it feels like, and it seems like from what we talked about last time, that when it's open space and not someone's property, we have more policing ability than if it's somebody's property, that they will come back on us and do what they want. But if it's the open space and part of the HOA, there's more grounds to stand on. I think Donna, you were talking about that, weren't you, last time?
Yes, I did, because like I said, you know, the people, all the trees and everything were in there. They used that property and they'd cut them down if they wanted to. And I, my concern is, you know, if they cut them down, who's going to go in and make them put them back up again?
So, can we work on 84 and 108? That gives a buffer then.
Well, I guess what we would offer is we could, just to keep a contiguous open space, we could provide a 20-foot open space that would connect to the open space lot 125. And we just would run 20 feet of open space across lots 84 and 85. And that way, it would be contiguous and it's just not, you know, spotty open space here or there. It's something that's contiguous and defined.
What about 108? There's like a little small triangle on 107 that you could cut out too and do the same thing.
Yeah, we were okay with 108.
I don't think it matters, just the house isn't going to be any different.
We could do 108 as well, yes. And a corner on 107, yeah.
Then that makes me feel better because I, my perspective is, because I've had developers try to develop next to me before, is the people that are there, we have to try to help protect them. And I'm trying to make sure Nagley residents have some buffer that isn't, isn't so reliant on a neighbor doing or not doing anything. So, that's why I'm so adamant about this space not being someone's property. That makes me feel much better if you're willing to do that.
And we are.
So, that's all my comments then.
Okay.
My comment would be, is that going to, are you going to make that an extra lot number? Or are you going to put it on the deeds on those properties that the people know upfront when they're buying those lots? That that is not their property?
The piece we're going to add on 84 and 85 will be part of lot 125, will be part of 125. 126, I'm sorry, my eyes are bad. And then the, the open space we're going to add on 108, we'll just connect that to lot 86.
Okay, so their deeds will show that that is not their property.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay.
Well, that helps.
Okay, do we have any further comments?
Space along, all of it will be part of 126. We'd run an easement for the emergency access to room. So, it would really just be one contiguous space.
Right, yeah, it should run down from 108, down the back and across, right down to 124, right?
That's correct, yeah.
I mean, there's a dotted. I mean, there's a dotted line on the map.
Yes.
Okay.
Doug, you said twenty feet?
That's correct. I'm sorry, it's twenty five feet.
Yeah, designated as a buffer easement, it looks like.
Yeah, it's twenty five feet.
You had said twenty four, will you go twenty five, or do you want the twenty?
Twenty five, it said.
We'd like to hold it to twenty if we could, just to, to help a little bit with the lot depths and we start running the rear yard setbacks. So we would like to keep it at twenty.
Are you going to be able to make those reasonable, buildable lots if we take that off?
I, I'm confident we can do that, yes.
This is, this is the top one. I mean, now you're a hundred feet, you're losing twenty feet, now you're a hundred feet deep. But this one doesn't matter. But still, you're a hundred and ten feet deep, you're. I just don't want, I don't want to lose the twenty.
Yeah, I, I, we would, just to make sure we get good billable lots again, so that we have proper rear yard setback. Works with the product, we, we'd like to make it a twenty, twenty foot. Open space lot across the rear of those lots, eighty four, eighty five and one oh eight.
Okay. But you can see, if, if you're worried about the depth of the lot, you can see why we originally suggested that you delete a couple of lots. Does anybody else from the commission have any questions? See you scratching your head there, Jeff. You're okay?
I'm fine.
Okay. Do we have a consensus on where we are? Do, do you think that we should move ahead with it? And recommend it with the changes we've discussed, which keeps the four lots in there? Or would you like, any of you like to still suggest we remove the four lots?
Stan, I personally feel we inherited this from Amelia.
Right.
And, you know, you gotta win some, lose some, so my recommendation is we move forward.
Okay, so it's the lesser of the evils.
And I would agree. I, I don't agree with it, but I agree with Donna's stance. I damn sure don't want ninety six in there.
Right. I don't think they want ninety six either, because you probably couldn't sell them. In the current environment. Okay, well, in that case, Mr. McCarthy, do we, we should. Make a motion to move forward with a recommendation to the trustees?
Yep, yeah, we can definitely do that, and if we can. What I can do is I can run through the PUD development agreement, because a decision on these waivers. As well as the general conditions, just, just to kind of, for me to close the book on this. Pass it along, that might be the most thorough way to approach it if you'd like.
That, yes.
Okay. So my understanding is that the lot area waiver is granted per the open space concession of twenty feet. In width along lots eighty four through eighty five and one oh eight, as well as the corner of one oh seven.
Actually, when I get technical, it'll be the corner of eighty three as well.
Okay. All right, that's a great, that's a good catch, okay. And eighty three, lot width. Is also waived. Side yard setbacks, proposed five foot minimum thirteen total. Is approved in accordance with number one. Which is a commitment to build the homes to a higher standard with the architectural coverage. Facades shall not exceed ten percent and the sides shall not receive, exceed fifty percent of vinyl coverage. The number two of that, the one car garage option is scratched. What I have, the open space reduction is granted. The trail network will connect to Nagley. The reduction is also approved with the commitment to install the Eastern Red Cedar, Green Giant Arboretum. Or Spring Arborvitae and along the northern buffer of the fifty foot easement. Maximum gross density waiver granted in conjunction with the lot area above. Open space shall be completed prior to the commencement of phase four. Proposed buildout expected by twenty twenty four. Okay, almost done. The. Proposed fifty foot access easement to be granted to the township is to be maintained by the homeowners association. Shape files required for easements proposed. The wedge area as shown and other easement, access easements must be maintained by the HOA. The fire access is to be surfaced in conjunction with the approval of the fire chief. Let's see here, that one is redundant.
That's redundant, right.
Yep, open space and trails are to be owned by the homeowners association. The PUD shall be linked to the single family residential use table and accessory structure regulations. The applicant shall construct the external sidewalks directly connecting to the development. That was discussed by the applicant at the last meeting. Let's see here. The, the planted buffer was already discussed as well. Trees removed adjacent to thirty five ninety Hyatt were agreed by the applicant to be replaced. This, this is where a point of clarification is needed. My assumption was that it was a one for one replacement. If you, if you remember that fifty, that Hyatt Drive gentleman. He said that some lots were removed when a pipe was being installed.
Right.
So my interpretation was that, that was a one for one. But I don't know if, if there was another, if there was something I was, I might be missing on that one. But I'll just keep it one for one unless there's an objection. A NOX compatible ballard is to be placed at the end of the fire access Nagley intersection. All right, twenty feet of open space shall run along lots eighty three, eighty four through eighty five, one oh eight and the corner of one oh seven.
And go to eighty three.
And eighty three?
Right.
The. One item that was left in my notes, the, if there was some discussion about fencing. Along that fifty foot access easement, where, so if you see at the nor, at the northern portion here. Lots one eleven through one twenty four here at the top.
Right.
Staff was concerned that, you know, if you had a six foot tall privacy fence, for example. When that access easement's developed, it could, it could be a little awkward. You have essentially another front yard. The applicant is going to plant a buffer up there, but we never, I never got a full conclusion on that. I didn't, I didn't get a great read from if the zoning commission was concerned about, about that at all. But I can, I can strike it if it's of no interest.
Well, it depends if there's ever any real plan to use that fifty foot access as a street. Now that we don't have. The mayor and his plan for the, you know, little diversion to run through the back there and over in, into. Up, up the street and, and through the train station. I'm not sure that that will ever get used, it'll just remain a fifty foot buffer, I believe.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I, I think the problem is just from our perspective, you know. It's, since it's there, you almost have to assume worst case, you know, worst case scenario that it, that it could be developed, you know? But I'm, you know, you're. If we were betting on it, I mean, I think we might be in the clear for some time.
Right.
But it's just a matter of. Covering it, but.
Right, well, remember where it goes, at, at, at the end behind one eleven, behind lot one eleven. You don't have really a lot of access through there because it runs into the back of the, the Krogers and the adjacent lots. And so I'm not sure what's, what you would want to do there.
Right.
It remains there, remains there as a. A proposed access road and. Something's going, you know, it's just going to have to get done.
Ed and Doug are raising their hands.
Okay.
I, I think that, if you don't mind me speaking. If I'm understanding correctly, the concern is that potentially those lots one twenty four. Or one eleven through one twenty four, which could have potentially a frontage on. The road in the future, on that new road in the future, correct?
Right.
So, I mean, to kind of put that, you know, to avoid that, could, on the record plat. Couldn't we make a, a restriction that lots one eleven and through one twenty four. Have to front onto, I don't know the name of our street, Virginia Place, Virginia Lane. And that way, I mean, we've done that in other communities. You know, specifically where they're on, you know, it's actually more so in communities where the road actually already, the two roads already exist. At a corner, for instance, but I, I think that might be a solution to the. The issue.
Yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Okay, could you add that in there already?
All right, I will add it in. So it's a record plat shall reflect, one eleven through one twenty four must access directly onto Virginia. Or Virginia Lane. Seven point oh four F seven, street trees are present, but on lot vegetation is not present. There's on lot vegetation landscaping requirements that were not waived. So the, in the, in the, and they are not shown on the plan, so the applicant would have to comply with the on lot landscaping requirements. And finally, the applicant must comply with all federal, state and local regulations. So that's, that's all I have.
Hey Eddie, one question, and this may not happen until after the, the streets are committed to the township, but. What is the township's ruling on parking in cul-de-sacs? Again, I get back to the fact that we're. We're pulling out that one car variance garage. You know, I don't know how big the driveways are going to be, how wide, how deep. It could lead for a lot of cars to be parked on the street. Do we have an ordinance that prohibits parking in cul-de-sacs in the township?
It's a good question. As far as I know, you know, during snow emergencies and that sort of thing. You know, it's requested that, that on street, that cars are removed from the on-street parking spaces. But as far as a requirement of it, there, I do not believe there is a formal requirement that you cannot park in a cul-de-sac. I know that, of course, with, you know, proximity of fire hydrants is regulated by the fire code. But parking in a cul-de-sac, to my knowledge, is not, and, and I believe it would be a case by case basis on how. You know, the recommendations would be approved. Having said that, as well as from zoning, like. We don't have any, we would not even through the zoning resolution be able to address that if we want.
No, 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 I knew that, but that was just a concern down the road, thinking about this.
Okay, but through the PUD, you could, that is a condition that, I mean, you could condition that. But it just, we, you know, zoning, the zoning resolution does not regulate the right of way. As, as you know, I'm sorry.
So as part of this PUD, we could stipulate that there's to be no parking in cul-de-sacs or within, I don't know, ten foot to the. To the first breaks? Something of that nature?
Yes.
In some cul-de-sacs, Eddie, we've specified one side parking only. So that, you know, if people have, people have a, you know.
Stan, you can only park, how do you decide which side of the cul-de-sac, it's a circle that you could park on?
Well, no, no, I meant for, for the street, it's all coming up.
Oh, yeah, 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 okay.
Because that happens in our cul-de-sac, the, the family at the end that's got the three boys. They had, had a few high school type parties and forty cars. Spread along a ten, a ten house cul-de-sac, had them going around the corner and parked on either side of the road till we, you know, got them to stop it. So, you know, it's something that, that maybe the developer might want to consider as part of their homeowners association. Parking only on, you know, one side, on the inward, you know, on, on the. The one, the one side, so that it's not backed up, because you can get awful backed up.
Yeah, I don't know that I'm that strong on it, that I would like to put that as part of the condition for this PUD. But I would, like Stan said, you gentlemen at the conference table, I'd highly recommend that you put that into the verbiage of the homeowners. You know, the, the thing it gets into is, and again, I can't see that map well enough to see the width of that street. But I know the, the subdivision I live on, it has very, what I would consider. Not narrow streets, but there are times that people will park on either side. And it'd be damn tough to put a fire truck down between there.
Right.
We have the same problem on my street.
Yeah, so again, maybe, maybe we want to make that part of this, this PUD, folks. It's something to think about, that there's only parking allowed on one side of the street and let the developer decide which side it is. Normally, it's the side opposite of where fire hydrants are located.
Right.
I think it would be helpful if the applicant could explain, you know, the, the cross section shows nine, nine feet eight inches or eleven feet eight inches. For the lanes, it's an, it's an either or, which could make a, a good difference. You guys want to clarify that?
The back of, from back of curb to back of curb is twenty eight feet. It's the same width as the original, was done in phase one and phase two. Parking on, parking on one side of the street is, is not an issue. Yeah, we, we'd be happy to. Restrict parking to one side of the street.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that. And again, just as, I guess, normal would be parking, no parking on the side of the street that the fire hydrants occur on.
Right.
Correct.
And I don't know which side of that is, which side that is on this.
Yeah, well, we can determine that, but yeah, we can, we can restrict it to one side of the street. Yes, we have no issue with that.
Okay.
I appreciate that.
Thank you. Okay, well, that, that covers everything, Eddie. I, I guess we need to just. And make the motion to pass this along to the trustees. He's gone, we lost him. Eddie?
Yep, I'm here.
Okay, oh, okay. You pulled it up, sorry, okay. Okay, I thought we read the recommendation from the Clement County Planning Commission last meeting.
You did, yep, you're, you're, you did.
Okay. So. Would somebody like to propose the motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, to recommend to the board of trustees approval. Of, of the PUD draft. Development agreement to convey. In all approved conditions. That make sense, Eddie?
As discussed, right?
Yes.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it. Give it to Susan.
Okay, okay. Shall we, we'll do a vote. Mrs. Kane?
Yes.
Ms. Freed?
Yes.
Mr. Stitt?
Yes.
Mr. Schula?
Yes.
Mr. Shabel? Yes. Okay, thank you. Mr. McCarthy, is that where we need to be?
Yep, you covered it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Okay. When will that get passed to the trustees? Like, come up at their meeting next week?
We'll, we'll have to advertise the public hearing and it'll be. Yep, and it'll be on there April.
Okay. Okay. Well, then that case, we're done with that. We should move on to additional business.
Okay.
Okay.
So as far as the additional business goes, I'll get to it. Okay, so, um.
Can you blow that up, please?
Sorry?
Make that a little larger, please.
Even I'm having trouble reading that, Jeff.
All right, I'm gonna have to, let's see here, let me get a little creative with this here.
Eddie?
There we go.
How's that?
Thank you, better.
All right.
Is, is Stan still on?
Yes, I'm still here.
No, Stan Falk.
He is, yep, yeah, he just sent a message. Yep, so I, you know, however you want to do this, I, you know, I, I can give, I'll, I happily yield the floor to you, Ms., uh, Mrs. Kane and, uh, Mr. Falk. If you'd like, and I can unmute Mr. Falk. You hear us?
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I am looking at, let's see, is your screen, maybe that goes down. I'm just trying to see what you have in here. Okay, this is the, okay, um.
Would you like to give us, you know, Ken, um, we have some background, so that those of us who are unaware of, of, um, the subject, uh, know, you know, what the perceived problem is.
Okay, the, uh, the, um, there, I could spend a lot of time on this because I spent a lot of time looking into the details. You know, I'm not an attorney myself, but I am a commercial real estate broker, so this is, you know, stuff that falls within, you know, kind of my daily activities, dealing with a lot of this kind of stuff. Um, I am a resident of Pond Run Road. Um, you have the top Pond Run, where Pond Run, Mott and Fagan's Run, you're kind of that little pocket in there. Um, and there was a thirty-acre parcel that had been vacant for a long time. The guy just got hay off of the, the dirt and did that for years and years and years. Well, the guy comes out and he buys thirty acres, you have the thirty acres and starts putting up what looks like a very unusual building, like we're thinking, you know, this is a residential neighborhood, but what he's building does not look like a residence that, you know, and it doesn't look like a residence, it's not, you know. So the, you know, we, we had to kind of do a Sherlock Holmes thing, that you try to figure out what he was up to. Um, Eddie figured out that, or heard about some case up towards Cleveland where what somebody did is a, basically, you know, the, um, we as roles, is everyone on here is people familiar with kind of zoning law and regulations, stuff like that? Are we talking to the general public, or should I assume some basic knowledge of zoning and all that?
But assume, assume basic knowledge, because I think it's just the, um, zoning commission left.
Okay, so basically the agriculture, you know, the, it's an agricultural use. You know, that a winery is considered an agricultural use, the agricultural use basically trumps the, you know, local zoning authority. And, you know, there's all kinds of strategies that, well, there's things that are kind of legitimate, like a guy has a pumpkin patch and he has a couple of weekends in the fall, or farmers' markets and things like that. And you think of that, you know, I think people pretty well widely acknowledge that that's the spirit of the agritourism and the agricultural use exemptions. Um, you know, but the problem that we have is really, I don't know that the zoning department really, I don't know what they can even do here. Um, because the Supreme Court, there was a very similar case in Cleveland where there was an existing winery, probably weren't selling a whole lot of their wine, but they had a barn and they started having wedding events, you know, at the, at this barn. And you have the township sued and the, you know, that it went all the way up to the Ohio Supreme Court. The, when it got to the Ohio, the Ohio, the Ohio Supreme Court ruled, the township's case was that you're allowed to have a winery and that's an agricultural use, but you're not allowed to Trojan horse a wedding venue in by just saying that you're a winery. You know, the opposite argument from the winery was that, well, we have these events so that we can market and sell our wine. You know, the law, you could get into the ORC and the law is like, I think it's a terrible law. I think this is something that they probably had never, you didn't really foresee when they created it, because the, you know, the, the group that would object at the state level would be the, the farm lobby. And, you know, how many of these guys actually have wineries, you know, um? But, so the point is, this guy builds his house. You know, we get the building plans, we see the first floor has things like a side-by-side, has side-by-side bathrooms that open out onto a big veranda. You'd have space for like a commercial kitchen. We found out, because my brother's in the restaurant business, that he'd been out looking for commercial restaurant equipment. Um, when they went to the, you know, the building permit that they filed originally that got shot down at the county, well, you know, included things like a fifty, you know, a fifty space parking lot. Um, and I think he got shot down in trying to build a, uh, large receptacle, but I'm not totally sure of that. But at any rate, there's no plausible way. I mean, it's just not a wedding barn. You know, they've got a residence up above, like an apartment, which for the wedding, that'll be the bridal suite, I'm sure, you know, and then, you know, she can get up there and put on her dress and all her friends and everything. It'd be, I mean, it would be good for that purpose, but you were basically, it's a, it's a wedding, it's a, it's a wedding venue under the pretext of a winery. You know, the law basically says that like, once you plant, like he could literally go out and buy some saplings or vines or whatever, put them in the ground and say, well, I can't produce the wine yet, and this was actually ruled on. You know, that, uh, this was another case, um, but a guy did that where he planted the grapevines and said, well, I'm a winery. And they're like, you can't have events here till you have wine. And they ruled that, well, he's in the process and he shouldn't be able to, you know, he shouldn't have to wait, you know, if, if that's all he's got and he can't produce his own wine, then he can buy grapes and ferment the grapes at the, in the barn and then, you know, and, and just never, I mean, if I was going to do it, if I want to be shady, you know, I'd do it, I'd put it out there and be like, dang, I just really can't get this thing to grow, you know, I'm just, I just really don't have a green thumb. And then you get a bunch of Welch's grape juice and vodka and you put that in your bottles and then you rent the place and you you just tell people whisper, whisper, you know, if you want to book the barn, you have to buy forty bottles of this wine, you know, you can give us some wineos downtown. I'm not saying you gotta drink it, you just gotta buy something so I can say I'm a winery.
Mr. Falk?
Yeah.
Where again is this that you're referring to?
Okay, uh, do you know Pond Run Road?
Yep.
Okay, did, if you go up from seven forty-nine, um, you go up Pond Run Road to the very top, there's a T in the road. You go right and you stay on Pond Run, you go left. You go on Mott Road towards Fagan's Run. If you went straight through that stop, stop sign, you'd be on the, the piece of dirt that we're talking about.
So go on Mott Run towards Fagan or go on?
Yeah, basically, there's a little kind of U-shaped parcel, or like a U-shaped, your Mott forms one boundary, Pond Run forms the other boundary and, uh, you, and, and you got houses all around. Like this is not, you know, this isn't out in the middle of like the, you're halfway between Mount Orbe and Sardinia or something like that. This is, if people along Mott Road, everyone is absolutely irate, you know, the, uh, these people have built their homes on Mott Road. Like one guy's like, you know, he said he, he lives in Emilio, he's an electrician, he always wanted a place to hunt. You know, he and his wife plunked their life savings down on, you know, you're buying this land and building the house. And you, and next thing, he comes to find out, he's going to be across, you know, every, every Saturday in the summer, this guy has his way. They're gonna, yeah, that's it right there. Um, you, but every summer, you, every weekend in the summer, they're gonna, if they have events, if it's successful, you know, they're going to be playing Blast in the Macarena and the Electric Slide and there's going to be drunk people driving all over the neighborhood and, you know, and I mean, that would be the worst-case scenario, you know, but, uh, I mean, I've literally gone and I've knocked on, I, I, I'm third generation in that neighborhood, so I know a lot of people in the area and because of other involvement that we've had with the Becture Power Plant, you know, community organization that's been, you know, since nineteen eighty-six, been doing a lot of stuff there.
Do you know the Taylors, Steven, Steve Taylor?
Oh, that name sounds awfully familiar.
The reason I ask that is because he contacted me a month or more ago.
Who's talking right now? Just, oh, Jeff did, okay. I, I don't think I've met you before, but go ahead.
But he contacted me a month or so ago. He said, hey, I got a neighbor, looks like he's doing this, looks like he might be building a, um, a wedding thing over there. So I'm just wondering if that's the same area.
Yeah, I don't know where he lives. It seems to me somebody Taylor, I, I put up, I don't know how this stuff works, but I put up like a Facebook page and I did not sign up as a group. I just said, my first name was No Wedding and my last name was Barn. And I put a bunch of stuff up there that, uh, I wish there was some way I could share my screen, but I guess I can't do that here, um.
So is, is this guy's property actually on Mott or on Fagan's Run?
Uh, well, okay, you, you, you're looking at the same image I am, you see Pond Run Road?
Right.
You see that?
Pond Run, okay, yeah.
Okay, you see where Pond Run hits, like right, right there where it says, right, right there, okay, that thirty acres? That's the intersection. If you go just, it's not actually south, but if you go down, you know, the whole, the whole, and you can see where the barn is, that's just the outlines, those buildings are actually built now.
Yeah, I'm looking at a satellite image, that's why I'm trying to see that.
That's the parcel, yeah, that's the parcel right there.
So basically, right there at the intersection of Mott and Pond Run.
That's right. And if you go to the top of the screen where you see the driveway and right in the middle, that Pierce Reserve, there's the, you know, I've got like some smack dab in the middle, that's me right there. You know, that little piece that, you know, down the driveway and, you know, I mean, my grandfather bought, bought the house and been out there forever. My yard is a mess when you did that, probably had eight cars out there on blocks and, um, but anyway, so the, you know, really, honestly, I mean, I want help from any, you know, I want to help anywhere I can get it. You know, on, I'm putting this, nipping this in the bud, um, I, as I mentioned, I've talked to everybody. There was a couple of people I missed, but basically the universal buy-in on, um, doing what we can to, if we can't do it legally, you know, there's, we've got remedies in the court of public opinion, you know, and basically if, if the whole thing becomes an arms race to see who can be a bigger nuisance, you know, him or the entire rest of the neighborhood, it's going to be us. I mean, he's totally outgunned and, you know, and everybody, like the guy that, that built across the street that's an electrician and put his life savings into building that house, like he's not going to stand out there with a bullhorn and, you know, shout at the bride when she's trying to come down the driveway and like, we're not going to sit there and shoot guns and blast music at just exactly as many decibels as we're allowed at the edges of our property and picket and I've even got right now, I've got two hundred yard signs that, um, what I'm planning on doing is just to kind of show, as a show of force in the neighborhood. You know, I've got enough of these to basically line them up a mile in every direction. You know, on the approach, they say things like, no, you know, like wedding barn with a slash through it, and other one says like, you know, event center equals drunk drivers, you know, uh, noise pollution and, uh, lower property values or something like that. And then I gotta, you know, there's, there's four, so we're basically just going to completely line the street for a mile in every direction. You know, with these signs and then call the guy up and say, do you really think that you can book a wedding barn in this kind of environment? You know, and, uh, and it probably runs them off. Like I said, the, the problem here is I really appreciate, you know, Eddie and Alan Freeman. Um, and, you know, Bonnie Bachelor to County, you know, have been really good about, you know, taking my calls and I think, you know, I've gotten a fair, you know, look, I mean, you guys got, I know zoning's got to do what's good for the community in general. Um, but I feel like I've gotten a very fair hearing, you know, and they, they've been very available to me. And I think it is important that, you, even if this is something where the law has set up to neuter zoning, you know, the, it's, I think it still goes a long way if the, to the extent, you know, like if zoning could take a position on this or something that, you know, they don't think it's within the spirit. I understand if you can't, you know, I'm, I want, you know, I, I don't want anybody that crossed up on anything, but you know, the, uh, but they've been very good, um, you know, keeping me informed, the things that they hear about what's going on there. I try to do the same. Um, I will tell you guys, since we're on the phone, you know, since we're talking about this, I did, I, you know, as, I mean, I've sent some very strongly worded emails. So that probably would be against my attorney's advice, but, you know, no physical threats or anything like that, but basically like, you know, buddy, you're doing the wrong thing, you know, you're kicking a hornet's nest here and, uh, but I'd sent him the emails, never got a response. I saw him out working in his garage, uh, Saturday or Sunday. You know, and I didn't go on his property, but I did stand at the edge of his property and, you know, ask, is Andrew over there? And he's like, that's me. And I said, uh, you know, do you want to talk about what's going, going on over here? And he said, uh, what do you mean? And I said, well, what are you, what's your plans for the property? And he said, raise a family and mind my own business. And, uh, and I told him, said, don't blow smoke up my, you know, why do you have a commercial kitchen and side-by-side bathrooms on your first floor? And he's like, I don't have a commercial kitchen. And then he told me that, uh, he told me that he thought I was very rude and ungentlemanly and I should mind my own business. And then I said, your business is the neighborhood's business and it was nice to meet you. So we made each other's acquaintance, you could say.
Okay, can I, can I just, can I just interrupt here?
Sure.
And give it, give us a bit of a break here. I want to step back and ask, um, Mr. McCarthy, um, when a plan had to be submitted for this building, did it not?
Yeah, no, that's a good question. Um, so when this, when this project came through, uh, it was submitted as a single-family dwelling. And, you know, as we do with everything else, we review the site plan, the floor plans and the architecturals. And we, we flagged it initially and said, you know, it's a really weird-looking house, just as Mr. Falk was alluding to, you know, there's, it, it, it's ju- it's just bizarre, you know, the, the way that the, you know, the layout and some of the, the general facilities in, in the structure. So we reached out and, um, you know, the applicant came back to us and just let us know that, um, you know, it is a dwelling and, you know, that, that, that's the intended purpose and how they want to use it and that sort of thing. Uh, and just basically covered all their bases, you know, they, they, they didn't say anything in particular that would seem to cause any issue, but staff always, you know, kind of keeps in the back pocket, well, you know, we hate to think the worst of people and we don't want to, you know, we don't want to outright call someone a liar or anything to that effect. We need to stop short of that, you know. But, you, you know, the, the applicant also advised, you know, that they were interested in perhaps doing some agricultural activities on the site and that sort of thing, which seems to make sense, given the, the scope and the scale of the property. So we continued to track on it for some time. Um, and as the neighborhood, you know, the neighborhood has a number of savvy individuals as well who've kept an eye on the project and have stayed in touch with, with the township. And so we've, we've reached out, we sent a couple of letters to the applicant, just clarifying in no uncertain terms that, you know, this is a single-family residential property. Their, you know, commercial uses are not permitted on this property. Uh, knowing full well, as again, as, as Mr. Falk mentioned, there have been case, there's been case law here where, um, you know, people have pulled off, you know, pretty significant miracles, if you will, to get, uh, you know, wedding venues and things approved just by merely having some grapes stored in, in a barn, you know, so we wanted to just be upfront about all of this, um, that, you know, we, we want to do business in a particular way that's transparent and we want everyone to, uh, you know, we want the neighborhood to function properly and we don't, we don't want anyone strong-arming anyone in any, any direction. A little bit of common sense goes a long way. So we, we've also had a meeting with Mr. Chamberlain and his wife. She, uh, his wife's an architect, so I, you know, that's part of, um, the, you know, the, the design might be attributed to some of that creativity, I suppose. And, um, Mr. Chamberlain and Mrs. Chamberlain also expressed that in the event that they want to move forward, they definitely want to work with us. They don't, they don't want confrontation. And they went so far as to say that they might, um, you know, they, they might even try and get on the Board of Trustees' agenda to, to, to discuss the project even further, introduced themselves and that sort of thing. Uh, and Mrs. Kane also has, has a good amount to add to this as well. I know that she's been in contact, uh, with, um, Mr. Adam Byrd as well, on some of the, some of the finer points, uh, just kind of covering all, all of our bases as well. So she, she, I'm sure that she's got some really interesting.
Let me ask this, is the house completed or is it in, under construction?
It, it is, um, it is complete, but, um, there's a portion of it that's on.
Of it?
I'm sorry?
Are they living in it?
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, I love they're living there. They seem to be there on the weekends and I think they've got a house in Bellevue, Kentucky or something like that, so.
So the house, the house is behind that, uh, wooded area in that, on your map there, is that correct, Eddie?
Yes.
Okay. Looks like, looks like a house was pencil-drawn in there. Okay.
Jeff, to understand, you know, how this looks, he would, I went up and looked at the plans after I started talking with Stan Falk about how it looked and everything. So I went up and looked at the plans and it looks like a barn. It does not, any way, shape or form, look like a house. And then, you know, Adam Byrd is a good, State Rep Byrd is a good friend of mine, so I talked with him and he went up, you know, if, I think I sent out to you, um, section nine oh one eighty and, uh, hold on a minute, and the, um, nine twenty-nine oh one, um, about agritourism. And Adam, to help us out, went to the Ohio Township Association. And I asked him, Heidi Falk, Falk is the, um, director up there. He didn't remember if he talked to Heidi. But the notes that he sent back in the email that I forwarded to all of you.
I didn't get that, Donna.
Who didn't get it?
No, ma'am.
Did any of you, Stan?
Yeah, I've got it.
I don't know that I, what, what was?
I got it, Donna.
Okay, I don't know why you didn't get it, Jeff, but Eddie, can you pull up what, um, Adam sent to me? Okay. I don't know why you didn't get it, Jeff, but Eddie, can you pull up what, um, Adam sent to me, please?
Oh, I, I did get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was in the, um, in the packet.
Right. So, you know, um, I had asked Adam to be, you know, join the meeting tonight. But unfortunately he's up in Columbus and he won't be back until Thursday night. But just the general outline of what he found, you know, was able to come up with, um. Was that the Farm Bureau would oppose any legislation, would, would oppose. Anything to try and take this out of the Ohio Revised Code. And they're a very strong group and especially up in Northern Ohio. So, um. I don't know how we go about this. He recommends that we talk with our attorney. But, um, I'm, I'm the secretary treasurer of the Claremont County Township Association. And I'm taking it to all of my trustees that are in our organization. As soon as we can have a face-to-face meeting, because I don't think they're aware that this can happen.
As it stands right now, kind of our hands are tied.
Absolutely.
And, uh, the law's on his side.
Well, well, it really, it really depends, Jeff. Um, if, if he's proposed this as a single family residence. And then build it as something else, I would have thought that was some sort of illegality. Um, that he can't get around, um, I'm, you know.
But if he's zoned agricultural, doesn't that open up a whole lot of doors for him that we really can't?
Jeff, Pierce Township does not have an exit. We have Residence A. Eddie can come on with this. It's all being, even though it's farmland, it's still Residence A.
Right.
But does he get, if it's Resident A, but he applies, uh, what, to the county or someplace for taxes to be. Classified for him, does that give him more rights than, than he can do more than what? Single family allows him?
Yeah. So the, the basic way to think, like, the way that this kind of plays out theoretically is, um. And what, what, well, I'll just speak to what we've, what has occurred elsewhere is that. You have an agricultural operation and the way that the O R C reads is it, it leans really heavily into, into agricultural property rights. Particularly for farmers and, and people that are, uh, running agricultural operations. So. It basically, if, if, if a structure is used for agricultural purposes, it says, I think it's primarily. Is, is the word that they, that they use is kind of the linchpin. So if it's used pri, if, or principally, I'm sorry, principally is the matter. Or is the word, if, but if you, for, uh, agricultural purposes, then accessory activities that. Could conceivably, you know, be related, uh, can kind of be included. So the, one example is, um, I grow hay and I store that hay. Well, I can have hay rides. You know, I grow pumpkins. Well, we have like a pumpkin patch and all that sort of, and all that sort of stuff. But the same thing applies to the, to the wine and perhaps, um, events, venues, like a wedding. So where, where, you know, the wine is sold, no matter. You know, and, and, and so the scale, the problem that is in the legislation is that there's not a really a great definition as far as, well. Fifty-one, it, it, does fifty-one percent of the structure have to be used for a vineyard purpose?
The, the case Eddie, the, the one that decided that was actually, is called like Terry versus Sperry or something like that. And, yeah, it went into that and it set an unbelievably low standard on what you'd have to do to, you know. Like you use a closet to make wine and, you know, and then you say that the whole bottom floor of it is, you know, there that's to sell the wine or whatever. But I mean, the, the, it's comically, the, you know, I, as I read it, I thought that the, the way that they interpreted the law. Was comically broad, you know, and I can't believe it made it through the Supreme Court, but I guess, you know, who knows? They're political too. They probably just, you caved into the, uh, you know, the farm lobby. But yeah, I don't think that the way, I mean, it's, he's probably got the law, you know, and that's why the whole, you know. The whole kind of public relations protest type thing is probably the only way we're going to stop it is just to convince him that. You know, I mean, I, I can say, you know, like, for, for all you guys, you know, there's probably not a whole hell of a lot that you can do. But there's probably a ton that I can do to just basically, you know, show him that this is, you know, this is not a winner. And you're going to have a hell of a time trying to run that kind of business here. But, you know, I do want everybody to know, you know, and. If you've got any ideas on what we can do to kind of, you know, make this go away, but, um, yeah, I'm, I'm certainly all ears. But there may really not be anything, which sucks, but.
How many acres total does he have?
Thirty.
Okay.
I, I think there is a way, because I was just searching online and the Ohio State University Extension Service. Published an article in October twenty twenty and it was over, um, Caesar Creek Township. Challenging the same type of issue and the Ohio Second District Court of Appeals sided with the township.
Well, there's a difference in that case though. What that case was based on, what they wanted to do is say that, you know, they had a farm and they raised hay. And they, you know, they really got kind of, um, that basically that got shot down because they said that the farm was there to produce hay. And, you know, that, that wasn't a legitimate, you know, it's like to do a wedding barn and say, well, they just want to get photos taken with hay. You know, they said that doesn't qualify for the agricultural exemption, but the two cases, Terry versus Sperry and. The other one is some township, uh, can't remember the name of the township, but it, you know, Township versus Forever Blueberry. Um, which is the winery up somewhere in Cleveland. Uh, those spoke specifically to wine. And the difference is that, now, there is another thing. There are some outstanding issues of law, you had that, uh, um. Yeah, that weren't adjudicated in those particular deals. You know, there is an issue, potentially an issue because the, the winery that they made. That that case was based on was an existing winery. You know, this guy's taking land that is not an existing winery, but. I mean, there might be some ways to do it. I mean, I'd like to have an attorney, you know, look it over, but honestly, I don't know how much money I want to spend on. You know, uh, you know, like generate from the neighborhood to fight this legally, when I think we basically got the trump card by just. You know, making sure we're going to tank his business if he even tries.
Well, well, ju- just as, just as background, um. All he has to do in order to show it as a winery is to be growing grapes out the back. All, all wine is not made from the grapes you have on your property. I have a friend in Australia who owns a, um, a winery that, that's won gold medals. And not all of the grapes, believe me, not all of the grapes come from their properties. And they're brought in, brought in from different places and mixed, um, you know, squished and mixed, et cetera, et cetera. But he has what's referred to in Australia as a cellar door. That's the tasting facility. And that's what you could describe this as. I could describe this as, as being my tasting facility. Whether the, the wine's made there or not, it's not bloody material, as long as you've got wine there that you're having people taste. And you have functions and you get people come in, you, you give them wine, you know, they buy some and, you know, there you go. And the person who buys it could be your brother, for example. It doesn't really matter as long as you're doing what you purport to handle. Um, so probably the only thing we could hold him to is to make it, um. Have, have a vineyard, you know, of some description out the back. Uh, I'm not sure, not sure that we can force anything else, Eddie, can we?
Yeah, that, that's kind of the major, th- there's a lot of, I guess, discovery and reasoning that needs to occur here, you know. Realistically, there's not a lot we can do. We're not, we're, we are not enabled through the legislation to re, to regulate this. In any, in any sort of meaningful way, but that doesn't mean, you know, that there aren't areas on the fringes where if someone were to push the envelope. I mean, there's, there, there's room for, there are certain areas for interpretation where, you know. The, the, the best answer really is that this needs to be legislated for clarity. Everything else is going to be a fight, unfortunately.
Right.
Yeah.
There, there's nothing that, um, prevents him from having fifty cars on his property at the one time. Um, you know, it doesn't matter. I mean, you know, I have a friend who's got two barns and they're just full of old cars. So I mean, there's nothing to stop you from having multiple vehicles on your property. And there's nothing to stop you from having a quote, party on your property. Um, so I'm not really sure that there's a hell of a lot we can do. We, we passed the point of no return. Once the thing with Bill Eddie, we're, we're past the point of no return. It's got two separate bathrooms and a commercial kitchen, hell. Um, and it's built, then I don't think the township can do it. I, I'm pretty sure zoning can't do anything from my interpretation of it. And I'm not sure the township can. You might be able to go to the trustees and have them do something. Um, other than that, i- i- it's, it's maybe, you know, protests, since protests seem to be the end thing this year.
We got a legitimate right here, though.
Stan, the thing I think is, you know, any, anytime something like this pops up. And we need to go to the state level to get it changed and that even, you know, something happens in our township. Zoning happens, it's usually not proactive, it's usually reactive. And that's where we are right now.
Okay.
Although, you know what, this article I'm reading though, it quotes the Ohio Revised Code. And it says agritourism means an agriculture-related educational, entertainment, historical, cultural or recreation activity. Including you pick operations or farm markets conducted on a farm that allows. Or invites members of the general public to observe, participate in or enjoy that activity.
Right.
I think the out at this thing is, a wedding is not open to the pu, general public.
They, I'm telling you that you have to read the Supreme Court case. They've ruled very specifically on, I mean. If somebody can find the legal angle, the other thing is the guy who's doing this is an attorney at Dinsmore and Shoal.
Oh, my God.
Yeah. So I mean, and that's part of it. I mean, that's what he is, doesn't realize. He probably thought. He was going to come out the pond run and we're going to be a bunch of, you know, toothless hillbillies and, uh. That, you know, he's got a law degree and, you know, and we, uh, and, you know, and we can't spell our own name right and, um. You know, that, that, you know, because I'm sure he looked at that and I'm sure he's like, oh, yes, it's fairly newly married, young kids. It's probably, his wife is probably, all her friends are getting married and they're just in that, you know, it's that stage of life where marriage, weddings are the thing. And, uh, so she probably has this dream. He's an attorney and she wants her wedding barn and, you know. And, um, you know, he's like, well, I got the law on my side. Well, you know, but the thing is like, what, what's crazy about this whole thing is for me, I'm a businessman. You have lifelong businessman and, um, if I was ever going to try to pull something like that. You know, I would certainly knock on some doors, at least take the temperature of some of the people in the neighborhood and kind of find out like, uh. What do we, uh, you know, um. You know, like what, what do the neighbors think here? Because I would look at that and say, you know, you come in here and you, you know, like noise nuisance, you know, music. You know, sound travels both ways. It'll travel off the property, it'll travel onto the property as well as it travels off of it. You know, and, you know, and the thing is probably one of the things that emboldened him is that there's, you know, up the street, not too far away, there is another wedding barn. You guys got a horse farm, use it for the same thing. I've got a lot of those people reach out to me and say that they're, you know, deeply, you know, angry. That that guy's got the wedding barn, but nobody got everybody organized and got them to actually do something. And, you know, and that's the difference here is that we're, you know, I got a lot of people, I mean, everybody. I got a lot of people mobilized to, you know, put the kibosh on this. Um, guys, I've really got to run. I got to, somewhere I got to be at eight o'clock, but that's the long, yeah, that's the long short of, we really don't know that much. Zoning can't probably, you probably can't do anything. Um, but if you guys hear anything, if you think of an angle or something like that. I'd love to kind of attack it from every angle we can and you eventually, you know, run the guy off or, you know, get him to be a more. It's a funny thing. As he said, I wasn't being gentlemanly. Well, a gentleman would ask about this, but that's a different point for a different day. Um, anyone got any quick questions for me before I, before I duck out here?
No.
All right. Thanks a lot, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care.
Okay. Okay, Eddie, what? Eddie's gone. I've lost Eddie.
Eddie's there.
Okay, I thought I'd lost him. Sorry about that, Eddie. Um, what should, is there any action we can take? Can we, um, refer this back to the county and the county off to the state? Um, for the creation of, of these sorts of things on what in our, our case is single family residential. It's not as if it's a piece, a, a dedicated, um, five acre plus farm. Um, it was, you know, it was a piece of, um, property that's, that's designated single family residential, is it not?
Yep, yeah, it is. Um, you know, right now, I, I don't know that there's any action that needs, that, that needs to be taken. I think right, you know, as, as far as this being an informational session to get everyone kind of up to speed on. This sort of issue and, and what's going on is, was kind of, I think, the primary, primary purpose at this point in time, but. Um, if this is of interest to the zoning commission, we'll of cour, you know, I can provide updates as I receive them. And then that way we can kind of stay, stay tuned on what, what's going to happen. But again, you know, we're, we're just kind of handcuffed right now as a zoning body. To really do anything substantive, you know, to, as far, let, as far as like our legislation goes. Uh, we would really need something at the state level to kind of, to really push this forward, but. Again, if, if anyone in the, in the community tries to do, you know, there's still interpretation to be had where, you know. You, you can't just build anything you want by just running around screaming, you know, agriculture. I mean, there, there is a, a litmus test here. To be had and we, we would of course challenge anything that appears to be, um. You know, outside of the realm of our resolution or state, state statute. So. We will keep an eye on that sort of thing and if anything comes up, I'll share it. And otherwise, that's, that's about all I have.
Well.
Just out of curiosity, if he does. If he does do this and starts to serve wine, does he need a liquor license?
Probably does.
Yeah, I mean, that would be through this, through the liquor board, I mean.
I really, I meant to, he would need one of those and I know there's not a bunch of those just freely sitting around either. You know, I'm, my feeling is I'm mixed. You know, he's got thirty acres. He's kind of sort of. You know, he's, he's not in a general neighborhood. He is out in the, in the boonies. You know, I'm, I'm kind of both ways on it. You know, I can see the guy wanting to, to make a living. I can see. People wanting to go someplace like that. Um, you know, I, I love wineries myself. Um, hell, you know, the other thing, you guys all know I have a motor home. And there's actually a group within the United States called, um. Shit, Harvest, um, Harvest something, but basically is what it is. It's a group of people like this gentleman who have multiple acres and they have, um. Wedding venue, a winery, a this, that, and they let people who have. Certain sized motorhomes parked there for free for a night or two. And in return, you patron his business. You buy a couple of bottles of wine. You know, you, you go in and do some cheese sampling and this and that. So it, it is becoming a big thing in other states because I've been reading an awful lot about it only because. It's a place to, to go for a night and enjoy some wine and cheese and, you know, pal around with other people that have the, the motorhomes. But not saying that's where he's going. I'm just saying it's a bigger thing and, you know, we, we try to promote business within the township. I don't know, that is a business. I don't know what tax we get off of it, if anything. But I don't know that right now, I, I can understand the neighbors, but I could also see that if he's got thirty acres. And he's sitting, you know, an acre or so back off the road or, you know, his, his venue is that far off the road. I don't know how opposed I would be. Maybe if I lived next to him, I'm, but, you know.
I think if, Jeff, you know, I, I think the sad thing is that people go in and buy. You know, your property. I mean, I was talking to Stan Falk today about what happened to us over on one thirty-two. We lived over there and you buy your property thinking you're going to be able to enjoy it, your life. And then all of a sudden, somebody comes in and, and blows it all up. That's, that's not.
I understand. I understand.
Well, and I think, you know, with A- Adam Byrd's and interested in, you know, working on this more with us. And like I said, I'll take it to the Claremont County Township Association and make sure that. All my, you know, my fourteen townships realize what can happen in their area. And see if it's, this has happened other, in other townships, Claremont County too, and how we have to move forward.
I, I'd go back to, um, Eddie, I'm, I'm not just picking on you, but. When, when you saw the plan and it didn't look, um, it looked weird. weird slash different slash whatever, um, is there any way that you can put a hold on those and refer them to us and go, hey, look at this, you know, the guy's got, you know, twenty-seven bathrooms, you know, a, a, a ten burner kitchen and, and a big open space underneath. Um, he's declaring it to be a single-family home, but I don't think it is. And we could look at it, we could get to look at it and go, excuse me, um, we don't think this fits as a single-family residence. Go away. Um, you know, are we able to do that?
So, you know, it, through this process, basically, um, unless, I need to have a, there needs to be something in particular that someone's in violation of in order for me, or a, you know, preponderance of evidence that there is something wrong with a particular project. Otherwise, statutorily, I have ten days to approve a permit.
Oh, okay.
So if, if I, you know, if, if, if they let slip, for example, when, when the permit came through and there was, there was something on the plan that that, that showed, um, I can't even think of, of, of a great example, but if it showed something that was just undeniably not residential in nature, you know, um, that, that might, that could, that could conceivably be grounds to, to challenge that. And in, in which case they would have to appeal my decision. So if I were to, I, I could theoretically go through and say, oh, this is not residential. You're saying it is, but I, I'm, I think it isn't because of these reasons. That would then have to be appealed by the applicant to the Board of Zoning Appeals, who would then make a determination as to whether or not my, my decision was grounded in, it had, you know, had a factual basis worth support, worth supporting. As it stands now, what we got was, it's a really weird looking house and it has all the components of a house, uh, of, of what, what constitutes a, a legal dwelling unit. And there's, there's really no, there's no, there's no crime against having a, a, a bizarre looking house, or a, a house that looks like a barn, for that matter. It, 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 you know, it's bizarre, there's no doubt about it. But it's actually not even the first time, you know, I've, I've seen it before. There was a, a brief period here where, not, not necessarily here, but I've seen in central Kentucky, for example, and other parts of the Southern United States. People, people like, you know, having houses that look like barns. It's not super uncommon, but, um, it's definitely out of the realm of what's considered normal in a lot of areas.
Well, that was big in Kentucky, uh, not, well, many years ago, when, uh, the Kentucky farmers lost, lost their, uh, tobacco base. When the government took that away, um, that land was all fertile and a lot of them started growing grapes and put wine tasting in. And, I mean, that's really big, um, in, in Kentucky.
Eddie, is, looking at that plan, is any of their living area finished? Isn't everything up on the second floor, not on the first floor? The ground level? There's, there's no, no, there, there's no basement in this thing, correct?
It's essentially an above-grade basement. Yeah, so the, the first floor, you know, it, it, there, it's remaining unfinished at this point in time and we, we, uh, so, legal counsel, um, Tom Keating and I had a confer- had a meeting with the Chamberlains and we discussed this very issue. And Mrs. Chamberlain explained that, you know, they, they wanted the finished living space where they, where they, where they are situated in a way that they could enjoy the vistas and, and enjoy the, the view and vantage points of, of that particular elevation. So that, that was, that was their explanation for that. And again, we've, I've gone back and forth with, with Tom Keating as well. You know, one thing that we is kind of on this, on this conversation about challenging it, I mean, you know, I, I forget what the saying is, like you could sue a ham sandwich or something like, you know, that sort of thing. I mean, with, it's just a matter of, you know, you could conceivably fight about anything and.
How much money do you want to spend legally, though?
Right.
Right, exactly. And, and that, that's kind of where we are, you know, and, um, that's just, that's just the reality of zoning. I mean, that, that goes with, that, and that goes for a lot of different things. You know, people could show us something one day and then the very next day turn around and just do something without unbeknownst to anybody else. And, you know, we just have to, it's just a matter of having the stomach to, to pick that fight and, and, and how you want to handle it from an enforcement perspective. But you know, we're, we've been waiting and watching, you know. So what they, what they've ended up with now theoretically is we know that they have a house that most people kind of scratch their head when they look at, and they've put a lot of money into it. And they know that the township hold, has a pretty firm belief that residential, agricultural, and commercial activities are all pretty well defined and we have a pretty good grasp on that. So, um, you can live in a weird looking house. So far, there haven't been any wedding vent, wedding events. And we let them know, you know, that, that could conceivably cause some issues. And having said all of that, you know, they've told us that, you know, they don't have any, any near-term plans to do any of that. They're from, um, the Upper Midwest originally and they're interested in agriculture. They have their own current, you know, professions that keep them pretty busy presently. And they, they're actually interested in kind of like communal allotment sort of farming, you know, like, like in, uh, in the UK and elsewhere where, you know, the na- you know, people conceivably could farm a ten thousand square foot plot and, you know, that, that sort of thing. I mean, that's what they're really, they expressed to us as what their interests would be. But they don't think that even, they don't think that growing grapes on, in this part of Ohio is real, is a, um, is a worthwhile endeavor necessarily. That, and that was just what they said now. They could still give it a go, you know, there's nothing stopping an attempt at that, but they did explain to us that they thought that maybe the grapes grown here wouldn't be the most desirable.
Well, somebody said, not to belate this conversation, most of the wineries around here, they grow a handful of grapes and they import the rest.
Right. Yep, that, that would be, that would be right.
Yeah.
That would be right, so, you know.
I guess is all you can do is keep us updated, Eddie.
Well, another thing that, um, kind of triggered me when I looked, you know, Stan Falk was saying they're, they're basic, they're pretty much just on the weekends. If you look for, look for the address for the tax bills and that go, it goes to a Kentucky address. Stuff doesn't, their mail, I'm assuming all goes to there where they live in Kentucky.
Where is that, Donna?
In Kentucky. I don't have it. But you could, you could just have to look up his name and his mailing addresses in Kentucky.
Bellevue, Kentucky.
Which Bellevue, though?
Four one zero seven three. I don't.
Hey, that's my hometown. I know that town. I wonder where, are you looking at it now, Susan?
Yeah.
What's the address?
Thirteen fifty Belle Point Commons.
Thirteen fifty-two.
No, fifty.
Belle Point.
Belle Point, one word, B E L L E.
That's one of the new, um, that's one of the new subdivisions over there.
I thought it sounded new.
Yeah, it's one of the, uh, high-end subdivisions.
Yeah, well, if, if he's a, if he's a lawyer at Dinsmore Shoal, um, you know, more.
And Eddie, I think if this does come up, I know, um, the gentleman was saying that this doesn't apply, but I'm reading this Caesar Creek Township Board of Zoning Appeals case, and I think it does apply. And I don't think it's, uh, the Supreme Court ruling about the is clear cut as he thinks it is. Honestly, if he, if you talked to him, I think he needs to consult a lawyer and I would recommend Tim Mara because I've used him before. Um, because I, I think there's stuff legally that could be done, but if, if they're truly going after a wedding venue, I don't think it's as clear cut as he thinks it is. But that's not, I'm not a lawyer, though. I play one on TV.
They're not living there, are they?
Well, Stan says they're only there on the weekends and if they've got a fancy, fancy house in a new up, up, uh, beat subdivision, you know, they're not going to live there.
Right. Yeah, so.
Susan, does, um, when you're looking, wherever you're pulling that up, is it on like an auditor's webpage that you can get a picture of the house or anything?
No, I wasn't, I wasn't looking. I was just got the addra- the address from, um, our auditor's page.
Well, it's interesting, that address does not come up under MapQuest. B E L L P O I N T does not come up.
P E, has an E at the end, be, two Es, B E L L E P O I N T E.
Okay.
It's, it's cutesy.
Cute, oh, French.
All right. I don't, Stan, I don't think we're going to solve anything tonight. I think it's time for dinner.
I know exactly where that is, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're condos.
Okay. Okay.
Not be planning on doing anything, honestly. Because I think my grandparents' property, when we sold it, the people are, it looks like crap now, but they're not living there. They come there to do some gardening and stuff and that's all they do. So they have another house somewhere else. So, I mean, it, it could be totally innocent.
Right, yeah.
And barn houses is a thing. I see it all the time on Pinterest, so.
Yeah, well, not, not when you look at the plan and you see the separate bathrooms downstairs. There's a men's and a women's bathroom. And, uh, you know, what could double for a commercial kitchen and an open space where you could have your tables, et cetera. So.
They're not men's and women's bathrooms anymore, Stan. Come on.
Oh, no, sorry, sorry. It's them and, is it them and they, or we and them? Or maybe it's, um.
Unisex.
It's, it's, maybe it's the two things, thing one and thing two, since Dr. Zeus is going to get banned. Maybe it's for thing one and thing two. Okay, okay. On, on that note, um, is there anything else that anybody would like to raise?
And make a motion, we adjourn.
I second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks.
See y'all.
Bye.
Well, hopefully, there is no one else in the audience.
Okay, no, there's not.
Thank God.
Hope, hopefully we'll see one another in person soon.